Join me for the public allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Kim Otati, Deputy Clerk, is here. Kim, would you call the roll?
Yes. Supervisor Schneiderman.
Here.
Councilwoman McComber.
Here.
Councilman Martel.
Here.
Councilman Bubey.
Here.
And Councilman Skivoni.
Councilman Skivoni has an excused absence from today's meeting. So there's four of us, which is more than a quorum. So we can begin, and our conversation this morning will start with Hampton Bays in the downtown business district. We are joined by Janice Shearer, our Town Planning and Development Administrator, as well as Paul Knight from Historic Concepts and Historical Concepts and Elizabeth Dillon from Historical Concepts. And so we have contracted with Historical Concepts to sort of develop new ideas for revitalizing downtown Hampton Bays, and that's their expertise. And Janice, I'll turn things over to you, and you can take it from there.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board, for having us back. It's been a long journey, but we are still at it, and we're just trying to get some understanding of where you want to go and get some resolution and clarity in terms of the downtown of Hampton Bays. It's a hot topic. It's an upsetting topic to many, but it is just a planning topic. I mean, we're just trying to understand how we're going to move forward, and that is up to you, this board. In 2022, you signed a contract with Historical Concepts to gather the information you gave them after the listening sessions, to look at the online community survey that you did, and to just go through plainly without my input, without anyone's input, developer or anyone, just look at it in terms of just good planning, just setting down principles and practices of good planning. And I'm just going to turn it over to Paul and Elizabeth, because they've done a lot of work. They did the pattern book. The pattern book was a way of new development, having a guideline to hold new development up against, and so decisions are not arbitrary. And to be able to say, well, if you want to build a building like this, these are the patterns and proportions that are appropriate. And that's what the pattern book did. So it enumerated many styles, and in the context of its area, Good Ground and Historic Hampton Bays, what future buildings would look like. The pattern book is still an important document. It kind of got cast out, like Baby with the Bathwater type of thing. I still think it's important in terms of current planning and reviewing things. Part of what we thought initially was we would update the pattern book to take out things that, you know, were not appropriate or upsetting, you know, the idea that there would be more than three stories, which there wasn't, but whatever, setbacks, et cetera. So the form-based code and all of that have been annulled, the pattern book with it. We're just trying to understand, are we moving, keeping the pattern book? It's all gone. What do you want to do in this very important 10-acre area between Main Street and Good Ground Park? So with that, I will turn it over to Paul, who's also a professor, right, Paul?
I am, yes. Or I was. I taught history of urban form at Georgia Tech for a year.
Okay. But it's kind of nice, because we get that academic side embedded into this process, into the design process, so I really like that. So Paul.
Just add a little general first. So, you know, Janice alluded to when we did the pattern book back in 2016, 2017, we had done some public outreach at that point, met with stakeholders in the hamlet of Hampton Bays, public meetings, online surveys. So we had gathered feedback on what the residents of Hampton Bays wanted to see in terms of future development. Excuse me. As Janice mentioned, a part of that was what we call a visual preference survey, where, you know, we look at photographs of local towns, you know, all over the country, of what they like, what they don't like, and we synthesize all of that information along with our professional planning expertise, obviously, but really taking the directive from the residents of Hampton Bays themselves of what they wanted to see. There was overwhelming consensus that they wanted a vibrant, walkable, mixed-use, generally traditional-in-form village-business district. So that was kind of our directive that we used to develop the pattern book initially, you know, and, okay, these are the photographs you like, this is what we're hearing from the residents, here is kind of how you actually, from a technical design standpoint, get there. Some guidelines for how to make sure that development was consistent with what we heard from the residents. So when we were re-engaged in 2022, you know, we pulled out kind of all of that data gathering that we had done previously, the results from the survey, what we'd heard from the public means. We took the notes from your listening tour and kind of the updated notes, but we really didn't hear anything that was inconsistent with what we had heard back in 2016 and 2017. It seems like the residents had been pretty consistent in what they're asking for.
Yeah, let me just add to that, too, because, you know, we did do this survey. We mailed everyone. Of course, it did have like a QR code that brought them to an online survey, so we have all that data and a lot of participation in it. And then I did, I think, four big listening sessions, you know, every Thursday, and there were a lot of people that went on for a long time. And then I did focus groups as well in Hampton Bays, and it was overwhelming. People do want revitalization. They do want investment into downtown. They want that vibrancy. You know, the questions about, you know, managing traffic or density, how many units, who the apartments would be for, or the heights of buildings, what sort of goes where. Those things were, you know, reflected in those listening sessions. But I'm concurring with what you're saying, that there was overwhelming consensus in the community toward doing something, not doing nothing.
Yeah. We had a lot of positive feedback when we were kind of doing the initial outreach.
There's some who don't want anything, well, but just the way they, but just the way it is, but the bulk of the population clearly wants some positive changes. That adds vitality to the community.
Yeah.
And we did all the, as part of their look at this, they also did what as-of-right development is permitted today. So there was some obvious concern that there could be real just big-box commercial to some extent down there, and that is under current zoning, and that's not necessarily consistent with the park and how we initially envisioned it, even in the original comp plan.
Yeah, that's the risk of doing nothing, is you get, eventually you get investment based on current zoning, which is not aligned in any way with the community's vision for its downtown.
Exactly. And so that's when we were re-engaged about a year ago, that's where we started, okay? You know, looking at what could be done now.
One other little key step from those listening sessions, because when we would talk about downtown Southampton Village or downtown Sag Harbor, which is often referred to as sort of like the iconic downtown, or even places like Patchogue or Sayville, people would say they didn't want to be another, they didn't want to be Sag Harbor, they didn't want to be Southampton Village, they wanted to have their own unique community character. They wanted to be Hampton Bays.
Of course.
Sort of like a natural evolution of what they had been, you know, over time, and, you know, not to be a replica of some other community. And more, I think, a little bit more working class, and it's more salt of the earth, in a way, not that those places aren't, you know, great places, but...
Yeah, but embracing the year-round residents, you know, making sure that it feels like an authentic place.
Authentic, yes.
And so that's, you know, so we started with all of that in mind, obviously with good planning and professional principles in mind as well, and wanting to build on what the town has, you know, all of the assets that the hamlet has right now, and especially Good Ground Park, you know, being a really wonderful asset that the town has invested in recently, you know, making sure that the whole village-business district area really is a place that the residents want to be and can engage and find community. And so we have this most recent exercise we've been doing, and what we're here with today is, you know, we are just trying to create some visuals of what possible future development could look like, you know, that we think is in keeping with what we've heard from the residents, with the listening tour, that we think is consistent with, you know, the precedent of the kind of good planning in the region that we've studied and the other towns and villages that Supervisor mentioned, and how that might apply to the specific place of Hampton Bays. So Paul's going to walk you through our process and some of the visuals of what potential future development could look like.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
I'll put my professor hat on and go over here to the lectern.
Do you have a mic?
Yeah, you might have to pull that mic over.
Yes. This is the mic. So this is our area that we're looking at. This is Montauk Highway and Good Ground Park to the north here. So we're focused on this area of development potential between the two. And so when we, when we first are wanting to introduce ourselves to a town or to study other hamlets and villages, we kind of take an X-ray of it. And so we just look at the property lines, the streets and blocks, and then building footprints. And this allows us to kind of just study this quote-unquote skeletal nature of the town, to see like what are the bones that we're working with here? And just based on that little bit of information, there's a lot that we can glean from it. So even if I'd never had been to Hampton Bays before, just based on this diagram, I can look and see, oh, okay, well, this is probably where Main Street is. And there's prob, you know, because of all these missing teeth along Montauk Highway here, Main Street kind of, you know, peters out along this section here, but the main part of Main Street is along here, where you've got that street wall. And I can look at these buildings and see that a lot of these are oriented toward the streets, but none are really oriented toward the park. And this park is way back here, because these lots are really deep, 600-foot-deep lots. And there are very few things that we build that need a 600-foot lot. Most things only need 120-foot lot. And so based on this kind of initial blush analysis, we start developing notes on, okay, how do we kind of rectify some of these things? So for example, we want to have frontage on the park. So we want to either turn some of the buildings around, or if we can't do that, then create lots in such a way that you can create frontage to front the park, because you want to have like eyes on the street and eyes on the park and have activity on the park. We want to, you know, consider filling in some of these missing teeth to continue that street wall along Montauk, so that you get that outdoor room feel and that vibrancy of, you know, having walkability there along your main street, considering, you know, adding new streets and creating smaller blocks to induce that kind of walkability. And so once we kind of have this first blush at things, we then take a tub of whiteout and just throw it over our study area, and that allows us to kind of look at it with fresh eyes. And so we've got our whiteout here, and then we think, okay, what do we, what might we need to do in order to check all those boxes that we just identified? And so we might come up with something like this, but there's a million different ways to do it. But, you know, this gets us our block orientations and our small blocks, and we're oriented to the park, et cetera, et cetera. So then, with that as an underlay, we can now look at it with more of a, you know, okay, what kind of property are we actually studying right now? And so it's this, you know, we're looking at this kind of wonky property line here that if you just looked at it in and of itself, you know, it'd be hard to see, you know, what could you do with that? But by having this underlay of what is a good town or village plan underneath it, you can start to kind of develop some ideas off of that and be like, okay, well, if there's this street's under here, what if we had a street there? Or if we're wanting a street there, what if there was one there? And then what if the lots were oriented to the park, et cetera, et cetera? So you can develop a number of different plans that fit within your study area that you're looking at. And so then, with, if you kind of, you're like, all right, well, this is a pretty good plan, you know, let's refine that a little bit and throw in some building footprints to see, you know, how that kind of intersects with all the existing buildings, and you can do a post-analysis to make sure you're still checking all those boxes that we identified before, making sure we're capitalizing on Main Street and that park, creating that vibrancy and that walkability. And you can also ground truth it relative to other hamlets and villages. So previously, we've done, we did an extensive study of various Long Island hamlets and villages, looking at their streets and blocks, and this is called a NOLI plan, where you kind of look at the buildings as black and then everything else as white, so you can see what is the density of buildings. And so from all of that analysis and process, we then come up with this potential plan for that area between Montauk Highway and Good Ground Park. And so this plan, you know, really extends that idea of walkability and vibrancy. It connects, it physically connects your Main Street to the park, so that, you know, all those, you know, if you buy ice cream at the corner shop here, you can take that with your kids and walk up to the park, and they can play in the park, and you're parking here in the back, and so everything is very connected and permeable, very vibrant. And this is how the plan shakes out in terms of program. So again, this is just kind of an initial blush at what the square footage is could work out to be. But overall, we're looking at 145,000 square feet of ground floor, and then the buildings modulate between one to two floors. So if, you know, on average, we've got about 145,000 square feet, about the same amount up on the second floor, so then in total, a little less than 300,000 square feet. And that's a mixture of ground floor retail, second-floor office, 160 residential units, and then back here and along this area as well, we have enough room for 480 parking spaces to accommodate all those new uses.
Is that on-off-street, Paul, or does that include on-street?
That, that includes the on-street, so we are indicating some on-street parking. It's actually not much on-street parking. I didn't count the parking along the park up here, so that number mostly is the internal-to-the-block parking here and over here. And so again, you know, always going back to those principles of, you know, good town planning and making sure that we're checking all those boxes. And so making sure that this red zone here is kind of our quote-unquote "front-door zone", where we want to have the front doors and the front windows and everything along there, so that our streets are these vibrant, walkable things, and the park is activated with all these shops and houses, and, you know, again, makes a vibrancy there, and also it's good for safety, you know, having those eyes on the street, everybody looking out for everybody else. But then also wanting to make sure that if, you know, these streets are connected through, but if you didn't want that connection, that vehicular connection to be there one day, then you could still have these temporary bollards in these strategic locations, but the alley back here is essentially a two-way drive that can still allow for continuous traffic flow if you, you know, for whatever reason, don't want to connect to the park road. And so ground-truthing some of these dimensions that we're showing, this is a street section of one of these new streets we're showing here, and given the distance within our study area from the east to west there, we've got about 240 feet to play with, and that's plenty of space to have two 60-foot-deep rows of buildings. You've got your main street here with one side with on-street parking, and then you can even line these alleys on either side with angled parking if you want, or it could be a two-way alley. There's a lot of flexibility there. And so then this is looking at one of those new streets, kind of an elevated window view, lined with shops. You can have like little internal parks in between the buildings. This is terminating onto Good Ground Park in the back here, so it kind of extends the town of Hampton Bays to the park. And this is a view from the park, looking back at this potential development, one-to-two-story buildings, you know, you've got your coffee shop here, and you're sitting out there on a sunny day, and... And then comparing this whole area to Sayville, just as for sake of comparison, Sayville has, within this rectangle, which is 26 acres, has 3.2 buildings per acre, and we're showing in our, in this potential plan, 2.7 buildings per acre. So it's a little less dense than Sayville.
So that's just our first step at what we think would be, you know, appropriate development for Hampton Bays, but that also meets what we've heard from the residents. So this was just trying to give everybody a visual that could be an example of an end goal to work towards.
Can I just, on the number of stories, well, you just talked about one and two stories, but you also, like, you have two and a half story, like I'm looking at the drawing, so that's a combination, some buildings are definitely two and a half stories, right?
Yes.
But it looks like, on average, the most of the buildings look to be about two stories, with maybe some one-story buildings.
Yeah, on average, it's mostly two, with some one-story and then some two and a half-story in there.
But you didn't use any three-story buildings, and certainly no four-story buildings?
Correct, yeah. There are no three-story and definitely no four-story.
And then you've got, because I know that was one of the points of dispute, a number of stories, nobody objected to two, even two and a half stories. There were, some people objected to too many three-story buildings, but you're not showing any, and then, and nobody wanted four-story buildings.
Right. Right, correct.
So, okay.
So this is really just a starting point to at least have something to go on, and then, you know, to be able to have further discussions and further refinement is obviously the goal, not to say, this is it, here it is. It's just, so what would you recommend? This is what they've done, and...
Now, is this something that we can get to the community, where we can start to gauge response? I mean, I personally think it looks great. I think it's, gives us, it seems to capture, to me, what the community was expressing they wanted in terms of their downtown, that vibrancy, walkability, wide sidewalks, outdoor cafes, things like that.
And Montauk Highway remaining largely the same.
Montauk Highway remains the same, and you have the ability here to not have to drive through downtown. You can actually pull off, park, spend your day downtown, walking around.
Yeah.
And then, and then go back without having driven through the middle, the center of downtown, whether you're coming from the east or west, it doesn't matter, because you have these, these two streets. So I don't know if, in terms of traffic lights, you're probably envisioning a traffic light at this intersection, but maybe not the other one, might be just right out, right in, right out, sort of thing. And you didn't, you're not showing a connection to Cemetery Road, which I understand that may be complicated to get to Cemetery Road, but there's a light at Cemetery Road. You know, in the future, that might provide another way to, you know, make a left into this community without driving through downtown. If you could, you're coming from the west, turn to Cemetery Road and somehow find your way through.
Yeah, this is really just the start of kind of creating that network. It could easily be expanded in the future.
The other thing I just want to bring up is, you know, the original zoning plan for downtown Hampton Bays included a wider area than this, right? It included areas north of Montauk Highway to the east of this, it included the other side of Montauk Highway, all the way to the train station. So I guess this is sort of a phase one?
So this is a simple, you're right. So the larger study area, you know, for the downtown district originally, was the larger area with the yellow outline. And just for the sake of this exercise to show up, you know, future development could look like, we wanted to use the northern portion, because there is more, you know, available land, quite frankly, open space, that we, you know, we kept all of these existing buildings, and we really were just able to add and work with open space, so we thought that that would be an easier first phase to illustrate.
I think on the south side of Highway Two, I don't know how many property owners have expressed an interest in redeveloping their properties, where you do have property owners in this section that are interested in investing and redeveloping or developing some of this space. So I also noticed this new street, you know, in your earlier, one of your drawings, you have it a little bit further to the east, and then you shifted it a little bit ultimately. Then I guess that relates to the willingness of property owners, or, can you just maybe explain that?
I think that was kind of the exercise, we started with the ideal plan and then tweaking it to work within the property lines.
Right, yeah.
It shifted a little bit. I don't mind it in the location that you ended up. I think it's kind of brings the street closer to the center of Good Ground Park.
Right.
Which maybe is a better location for it, and also I think if there's going to be a light there, it's more, it's more centered on the other two lights. You know, because you have a light at Good Ground, a light at the Cemetery Road, and then you have a light at Ponquaw Squire Town Road. So shifting it a little further from the light maybe makes sense. Okay. So again, in terms of bringing this to the public and getting some input, you know, I know there's been one person who's been critical of my saying that I'd like to do it in small groups rather than in one giant session, and to me, it's really just because I think people are more comfortable sometimes speaking in a more, you know, intimate setting and sharing, you know, some people get intimidated and don't want to share, they think that maybe they'll, their ideas will be criticized, and there's, there's nothing anybody can say that's wrong, yeah, it's, people are entitled to their opinion. We want to reflect what the community wants, not just what the loudest voices want. So I think that, you know, we should do both. I mean, we should, let's get community response to this, and, you know, well, first, town board response. If the town board does, is uncomfortable with it, then we make some changes, and if it's too much density or whatever, we trim it back. Or other aspects are, you know, not meeting the board's favor, then we can change it. But then maybe we can do some settings, smaller settings, and then a larger setting, is what I'm thinking. And if the community, let's just say hypothetically, there's a large consensus toward this development in this area. I guess two things have to happen. One is we'd have to put the zoning in place, whether it's through an overlay or whatever, we'd have to write a code, because you can't do this under current zoning, right? So you'd have to put zoning in place that would allow this type of development, maybe, you know, focused on a very specific plan that the community has endorsed, saying, yes, you know, to the private sector, we will give you what it takes zoning-wise to enact this specific plan, or within a, you know, a window of variability, right? But this would be what the community wants. I think the other piece of it, since these are private properties and they're multiple owners here, you know, we wouldn't want to know whether the private sector had any interest in executing such a plan. If the private sector says, oh, that's lovely, but I have no interest in doing that, that I'm going to make more money building, you know, my furniture store, my car dealership, or, you know, whatever it is, you know, my CVS, whatever they want to build. Um, you know, my CVS, whatever they want to build, then um, you know, we've, we've done a really great exercise that's gone nowhere. So I think at some point, we do have to have a conversation with property owners to say, is this something you're interested in? Because, you know, if not, great plan goes nowhere, right? But I think the way the board's been approaching it is, let's figure out first what the community wants, not what the developers want. Figure out what the community wants and see if we can then reconcile with, you know, the private sector and, and make something happen, rather than having downtown languish or get developed in a pattern that nobody wants. Because that's the only viable economic option. So I've said quite a bit, let me turn it over to my colleagues.
So do you have any breakdown on the residential, the hundred and sixty units? Like how many are one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, anything like that?
No, we were using a twelve-hundred-and-ninety square foot gross per unit, just to give us a rough overall number, but we didn't look at the three, two, or one-bedroom counts.
Typically, you have like eighty percent is two-bedroom, ten, thirty percent.
You can organize it any way you want, or you can say it's too much or too little, whatever.
Yeah, because, you know, we did not do a full building design.
Right.
So it's kind of a sample program, like you're saying. I think you could take the distribution.
Do you have some buildings that are wholly residential, or is everything mixed?
Yeah, some of these, uh, like some of the ones that are, that have the um, uh, narrower width, like we were seeing those as...
Park here.
In here, it's kind of like townhouses.
Yeah, and you can see just, you know, because of the breakdown of the square footage, ground floor is a hundred and forty-five thousand square feet, but then you have the ground floor retail is only fifty-five thousand square feet. So you could, you know, the balance would be something other than retail.
That far off from the fees, this big box was a hundred and thirty-nine thousand square feet as of right, potentially. So it's not that far different. It sounds like a large number, but when you hear it in context of...
Did you analyze as of right, under current zoning, what the residential density in this area is versus this plan?
I did bring the GEIS with me initially. I, I feel like it was around a hundred and eight or something like that.
So this is maybe fifty or sixty units more than current zoning?
Correct.
In terms of housing density. But Good Ground Park itself, I think, had eighty houses that could have gone there before the town acquired it, so...
That's right. So all the hard work was already done, and you preserved thirty-eight acres in the downtown. And, and the community at that time said, we don't want that level of density. So now you're just really dealing with the last ten acres that is, uh...
So this is like an additional fifty or sixty housing units above current zoning?
Yeah, we, so when we had looked, um, you know, almost a year ago, and we are here looking at kind of the, what's permitted as of right, one of the scenarios we looked at was as senior citizen housing units, and um, we saw a hundred and twenty-two units were allowable in the same area.
In the same area?
Senior citizen housing.
Of senior citizen housing.
Right, which obviously we want a mix of how, you know, you want young...
Yeah, but that was just the number.
People to be able to live here too.
Right, so that's only maybe forty units more than that scenario.
So anyway, you...
Uh, parking or service, yeah, it's kind of that, all the back-of-house stuff would be interior to the block.
Didn't include any at Good Ground?
No, I didn't count, uh, that. Thank you.
The parking is definitely needed in this area.
Yeah, you had the two municipal lots, right? One sort of way.
Potentially, you didn't count it as parking.
I, I counted both, both of these areas here and, and here.
Um, and obviously, none of this can happen without sewage treatment.
Well, that's the other thing. So you sort of have to come to some sense of what is the number, whatever you're willing to zone this for, because we can't really design the sanitary system without knowing what you want to do here. So it's, it sits in a holding pattern until they have a sense of what you're doing. And, you know, so it would be great if we could just at least get closer to a consensus on like, whatever you want to do based on whatever your constituents want.
I think you answered this already, but take away what was saved in Good Ground Park, what could you build here now, not counting what we had already preserved?
Hundred and twenty, hundred and twenty-two here, right?
Yeah.
These are the little design scenarios. Their scenario one was the big box sort of retail, and you can see, um, and I could put that up on the screen if you want.
So, right, the scenario one is what, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand square feet of, you know, single-family, single, uh, sorry, single-story, single-use retail, commercial, kind of more in big box store and parking lots. So it's a hundred and thirty-nine thousand square feet. And then we looked at these two alternate scenarios. Um, scenario two here is the senior housing, which would be a hundred and twenty-two units. And then we did have some in addition to that, some single-story retail, sixty-four thousand square feet of retail, with a hundred and twenty-two senior housing units. Scenario three at the bottom there was sixty-six apartments and seventy-two thousand square feet of retail.
Thank you.
Now, that may include an additional parcel to the east. We can look at that.
I feel like, we added this portion here later on.
Yeah, in the center. So those, right, those were not showing anything in the center.
Yeah.
Okay.
So in the current area, we connected the development across this street.
But those pieces, those two lots to the right in your analysis...
I think those are incorporated in here.
Yep, it's the same boundaries.
Okay. Looked like it may have gone a little further east.
To do the overlay, it might have looked just one lot.
Oh, yeah, like maybe, maybe we originally had one of these lots.
That's what I'm thinking, so that might skew the numbers slightly, but...
Yeah. Yeah, it's not like an apples-to-apples.
But, but either way, it's, it's not tremendous in terms of, you know, in terms of residential density. It's relatively close to the as-of-right residential density. Because I know that's one of the things that people express concern about.
Yeah.
You know, and, and that as-of-right residential density, some of it could be in the form of houses, like four-bedroom houses and things like that. So it's hard to really say what the population, this is more based on smaller units, you know, couples or small families, right? Individuals, things like that.
There, there's a ratio of, of retail and what it requires to survive on density, right? And I think this meets that pretty well. Am I correct in that assumption?
Yeah, I don't know what that uh, number is.
You're talking about like the foot traffic for retail?
Yeah, to support retail, so that they have a viable business. You know, one of the problems I always see is when you try to reduce density so much, but increase...
Right.
There's no one to go to.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, I think the biggest factor, and that is a big factor, no doubt, to have apartments over the, the retail. But in terms of like the vibrancy of downtowns, what seems to be successful, because downtowns have changed in this like post-Amazon world, where a lot of people are buying things online, it's, it's wet uses and the culture and the interactions and, you know, that vibrancy, that is what's saving downtowns. You know, and you're having the adequate parking, and people can go there and experience a downtown. It's like, it's like going out, you know?
Yeah.
You know, right now Hampton Bays, from the surveys that we've done, people seem to, if they go downtown, it's not that often, and it's to pick up one thing and go. It's not to experience downtown. You know, maybe they have an appointment at a, you know, hair salon, or whatever it might be. But this is a downtown where you spend the whole day.
Yeah.
You know, and maybe, you know, and I know you guys have not included a performing arts venue or something like that. You haven't got it to that level of detail. Hopefully, the movie theater is able to survive and stay, and that could provide that, so... And then, of course, Good Ground Park, which is, the whole thing is centered around a cultural, you know, performing arts outdoor venue.
Yep.
So people would go to the park for a concert, and then they stop and have a drink or an ice cream with their kids, or whatever it might be.
Be a consumer to participate in this space.
Yeah, it's a public asset.
Unless you have little kids.
So back, back to the board, does, I mean, does this feel good? Does it feel like we're moving in the right direction? I think it is, based on those listening sessions.
I think we took out the biggest concerns. One was that there wasn't enough parking, another was the three-story and four-story buildings. So I think this is a better place to start the conversation. I am concerned about the roads leading into Good Ground Park, but I'm sure that'll come up also.
Well, like I said, there's those bollards, so you wouldn't. But after maybe an event, you could let people out if you needed the, if you needed a relief valve, you would have it, but for the most part, it would stay closed.
Could you, I mean, this is something that's come up a number of times. Like this new street, this two-story, let's call it Park Avenue, um, or two-sided Park Avenue, where hopefully you'd have a bunch of wet uses, you know, cafes and restaurants and things like that. With this plan, could you, let's say on a Saturday evening, if you wanted to make it pedestrian-only and have like a street fair or kiosks in the street, or tables in the street, you could potentially close this section off and allow access, you know, through, through the park or, you know, whatever, through this other street?
Yeah.
That's possible, under this plan. So those bollards, when they're in place, that road connection to Good Ground Park could be just pedestrian-only. And so the community would have the ability to open it if it wanted to. It also some, it also depends on the ability to cross through the fire department piece. There's a thirty-foot section in there. And you could potentially, if this road is an asphalt road, that section leading to the park, that's primarily pedestrian, could have a different surface.
Yeah, yep.
Could be stamped concrete or something like that, you know, to distinguish it.
So it feels more like a pedestrian plaza, like you're saying. But vehicles can go over it on occasion.
On occasion, yeah. All right, so, John, you've been quiet, did you want to say anything?
No, I think now you go back to the community and see what the reaction is and get the feedback.
All right, so let's talk about how we do...
We could talk about it all day, it's...
Yeah, exactly.
Can, can this be put on our website? That's the, the first step.
Absolutely, it's there now, actually, I think. Uh, usually before the work session, I ask for the documents we posted.
So can I get it in, can I have it emailed to me so I can send it to Civic and CIC?
It's probably too big, but I'll give you the link, and then you can email to everyone.
All right, so, um...
And then, you know, the, um, develop, we can have historical concepts attend a meeting if you want. Um, that would, they have some, you know, sort of all apart tasks, and they're, they've largely fulfilled what we've contracted them to do, and this is their deliverable at this point?
Yeah, look, I, I think it looks really good. This is what I was hoping for, is something that really, you know, the community could see what it might look like and feel like.
There's no building that's really bigger than Duran's or Gator's or, you know?
Yeah.
And if you look at the original, uh, comp plan, strategic corridor plan done by Ernie Hatton, it actually isn't that far apart, you know, when you really look at the little building layouts and what was in that comp plan.
The kind of street and block network really is the same.
The network is kind of laid out there. It's very similar to what they did. So it's not inconsistent with what was previously in the comp plan.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like the, the biggest buildings are these two on the corner of the new Main Street and on the one near Lison Hatch Shop on the corner of the other street.
Do you want us to put this online as a survey and like to capture any commentary after this? Civic and CIC, see?
No, that's not what I'm thinking.
Just get it...
Just put it out there.
I think that we should schedule some meetings with different organizations, like Hampton Bays beautification, Civic, um, American Legion. But, you know, I, I don't want to make you guys go to ten different meetings.
No, and residents are also welcome to email us their thoughts and concerns about, you know, when they, what their initial reaction is to it, you know? If they don't, can't come to a meeting or something, but they want to, want to be heard, they can by all means send us an email and let us know if they like it or what they don't like about it.
Yeah.
Well, this description has been very useful, and I think it should, should be part of that, that contact. You know, people getting something like this, they need to have the narrative to, to, to fill it, fill in.
We can add that too.
Add that narrative so that they know what they're looking at, because otherwise they're just looking at blocks.
Well, we can add sort of maybe, uh, a video or something to our website about, you know, kind of going through the...
That would be, I'd put that in context.
And then end with this, where we're at.
Yeah, we could do that.
Um, I like, I really like the, these types of renderings. I, I'd love more of them. So you have this one looking toward Good Ground Park on this new Park Avenue, and then, uh, and a view from Good Ground Park. But I, I'd also, you know, well, one I'll note, the one looking toward Good Ground Park on the new street, like, you know, I'm not seeing outdoor dining, which is something that people talk quite a bit about.
Do you want like some kind of like sort of fly-through that they can show it in a, in a model setting? So, you know, that's something that could be helpful.
Do you have a, a sketch-up model that was the base for this? So we could just clean up the sketch-up model a little bit and create a little video fly-by?
A little fly-by? That would be awesome.
Yep.
Uh, because I think people would then watch the video and, and get a real sense of what it might look and feel like.
Could add that video to the end of the description of how you got here.
So we'll do the thought process thing, and then, and then the new task, a new contractual task would be a type of fly-through and potentially more renderings, uh...
But I think it needs to be, the one problem that I've always seen with this is that people assume that this is...
That's done, yeah.
That is done.
Right.
And that really has to be defined, this is a starting point. And a really, really, real early starting point, that all the input changes that. You know, there's a potential, and then there's the reality.
We just seriously need something tangible to look at and feel versus just talking about it, because it gets, uh, distorted in perception.
Or people go into the minutia of what exact stores and, and services they want in the buildings.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, everybody has their hopes and dreams of what they want to do in life, and they may say, wow, this is going to be a storefront, I want to have a, you know, shop.
Through zoning, you can't say like, this has to be a restaurant, and this has to be a clothing store, and this has to be a coffee shop, and this has to be a brewery. Those are all great ideas, and they're, and they're definitely ones of the community, but that's beyond where we take this.
Right, well, in a downtown setting, you'll be able to say, you know, all those things are welcome, and then they sort of come in naturally, based on the fact that there's these...
Market conditions and things like that.
I mean, people were getting into where they wanted the post office relocated to, and where they, you know, it, it just, it's... In an ideal setting, if you could make your dream town and decide exactly what services you want there, and who you want there, and how you want it laid out, that would be great. But, you know, market dictates a lot of that, so...
Life's a little messier, obviously, because you can't control all the things.
It's really about creating the framework.
Yeah.
Right.
But there could be some sort of consistency.
Yeah, it's like a plug-and-play, like you can put the buildings where...
You could want a toy store, but the toy store might not survive, so, or maybe it would, you know?
Well, you want generalized input as opposed to super-specific too, because a hundred people will have three hundred ideas.
Well, you definitely want, you know, the open space and the park is great, and at some point, someone is going to want to go get something to eat.
That's what I like about this.
So let's, you know, plan for that.
Yeah, I like this because it helps you get to that point without feeling that it's being driven on top of you. This is, again, a starting point, I think it's a really... This is, again, a starting point. I think it's really critical, critical to, to get across that this isn't an imposition, this is a place to get input.
So, so, yeah, an animation that showed really what it might be like to walk this whole loop here? And maybe some aerial, different angles, you know, in the, seeing the parking area, how things relate to the park, would be super helpful. Yeah, you know, it doesn't have to, you know, list what each building is. Yeah, I mean, these renderings are nice because they leave a lot to the imagination. So with the level of detail there, yeah, sometimes it gets misconstrued if we don't include it, you know? You know, if it doesn't match the cultural diversity of the community or whatever it might be, some people are like, oh, you know, that's, you know.
It's an impression, really, and, and the idea is, is this the right impression? Is this feel-good? And if it doesn't, then what is it that needs to change about it so that it does feel good?
Right, yeah, so you guys can figure that out.
Yeah, go, we've got ten minutes.
No, I, I think you've done a, I, I like, I think this is really nice. I, I, I'm really anxious to hear what the community feels about this. But based on the listening sessions, this is very much in line with what people were saying they wanted. You know, they didn't want as much density. They, you know, they didn't want the four-story buildings or even three-story buildings. You, you've done those things. They wanted more parking, so, you know, you, you've achieved, I think, quite a, quite a bit. I, I, I think this is financially viable, but that's just an intuition. It's more than what current zoning is, and so right on its face, to the, um, the owners of these properties, they would get potentially more, you know, square footage than they might have had otherwise.
But to be clear, they haven't seen this, and they, this is, this is our thoughts in the process. This is not, this is not what, what the landowners want. We don't even know if they would want to build this. And if they don't want to build this, and this is what we want to see, then they have to sell their property to somebody that wants to build it.
Or develop it according to zoning, which is what we're hoping they don't do.
No, what I'm saying is if we put this zoning in place, because this is what we want, if they don't want to do that, then they can sell them
Right.
to somebody who does.
Right, well, they would still have the option of current zoning versus the overlay. That would really mess this plan up, though, if it was only on some of these parcels and not on others.
There's probably some ways we can do that, like, and we can talk through that, uh, once we get some consensus.
I think once we have community consensus, we can get the orders out of the table.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I think that should be part of the stakeholder groups, the business owners and property owners.
One, one step.
I think the fact there's a little less retail, a little less mixed use than they originally had on a plan is a good thing, because they were complaining that we might not be able to fill that retail space, and who's going to be, and we're going to have open storefronts and all that. And plus, the shot from the park looking at what they're going to see takes away a lot of the fear of seeing the backside of, say, a CVS or Lowen's Zone or something we don't want to see from the park.
Yeah, and that's a good point, because there, it's important to protect that view from the park and make it beautiful, and not just be looking at.
And that was the intent of the park originally.
Right.
Want to add, pull the park into, yeah.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, good job.
Thank you.
We'll have them back.
And so we do have to figure out when we're going to take this on.
Well, I'll, I'll start, but it'll be online and given to refer out to the Civic and CACs, uh, the beautification and the business property owners, and start with that. Uh, and then you can let me know how you want to conduct meetings.
Well, once we have that animation too, that's something that we can show to groups, and we could just get their comments. How does this feel? What do you think? Is this what you're hoping for? Is, is this not what you're hoping for?
I think just having these tools and, and having that is like worth a lot in terms of, uh, working through the issues.
Absolutely.
Great.
Yeah.
Very.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so, um, we're just going to do a couple of quick updates, and then we have executive session on a number of items. So, um, first, let me say that, um, at Southampton Hospital tomorrow, that's, uh, October thirteenth, there's a free adult flu shot clinic, adults eighteen and over. It's at the Parish Memorial Hall. You guys are probably familiar with it, because they have the drive-through COVID testing there. That's two thirty-five Herrick Road, and it goes on from nine AM to eight PM. So, uh, if you're looking to get a free flu shot, it's a perfect opportunity. I, yesterday, I, I did another session of Talk of the Town, which, uh, with the new mayor of Southampton Village. It went well, so they're just, you know, and that's going to be put on the air soon. We got to talk about a lot of the issues, town-village issues, including sewage treatment, park development, and, uh, you know, other issues of good governance. And the traffic cones that, um, highway and police have been doing at Canoe Place Road, we are doing it through the end of this week. This is last year, we ended right around this time.
No, last year, we ended up November seventeenth.
We ended up extending it a little bit.
Till November seventeenth.
Yeah, another two weeks. Yeah, so we can do that. It's up, it's up to the board.
At least into November and see how traffic is, because right now it's still bad.
All right, so, um, you know, I'm being told by police that we're reaching a point where, um, traffic has calmed down enough that we could suspend the program after this Friday. If that's not the case, we can certainly keep it going, so.
I would like to at least go through the thirty-first and see where we're at then.
We might want to see what happens if we suspend it, um.
I think it's just going to, it, we're already getting complaints about it, and I mean, I sat in traffic this morning, and it was scrolling, it was parked on the canal.
All right, let me talk to the police chief and see if we can extend it, um, for two more weeks. You, you're saying, because he had, I was just talking to him yesterday, he felt it was right around mid-October.
It was November seventeenth. I looked it up.
November seventeenth?
Mm-hmm. I feel like at least if we could get through the end of October.
We ended it and then brought it back.
We did, because people complained.
Yeah, all right, so let me, let me talk to the police chief about that. So you're thinking, again, mid-November rather than mid-October?
Yes.
Okay. And then, um, the first public hearing on the twenty-four preliminary budget is scheduled for Tuesday, six PM. That budget, by the way, does include some money for police and highway for, you know, doing these types of things with the cones. Includes an additional four police officers, but it also includes a, a special fund, funding source for traffic mitigation. So that's, uh, six PM, uh, first public hearing on the twenty-four preliminary budget. And then, um, that will be hybrid, and, um, so you can access it remotely. And, uh, the preliminary budget is, um, up on the town's website, if you want to view it. I, I did Council Minsky, Voni and I both were at a, um, a service related to, uh, support for Israel that was held yesterday in East Hampton. It's very moving. And, uh, again, that's a, obviously a condition, a situation that we're going to monitor. There's many people in our community who have loved ones in Israel right now, and, uh, you know, they're a close ally nation, and it's certainly something that we all should be paying attention to. Anything else update-wise?
I do have a couple from the Youth Bureau, real quick, if I can. Uh, they have a few new programs that they wanted us to mention. The Two Rs for Fun is a collaboration between East End Arts and the Youth Bureau. The mentoring program matches adults with youth in grades three and four. A book is shared between the mentors and the mentees, where they are encouraged to write what they are reading about. And it goes on, but I'll skip through them. One other new program is boxing offered through the Youth Bureau this year. Uh, Walter Brown, who is a veteran, teaches this non-contact sport. So, and is, has offered to work with the Youth Bureau for a very low fee, and the kids are really enjoying that program. They've also teamed up with the Southampton Cultural Center in offering teen entrepreneurial program. This program matches up, uh, adults, businesses, and the youth to, um, culminate in programs. They're going to market on November twenty-fifth in the Southampton Village at the tree-lining ceremony. And the last one is storytelling and a new journalism program for elementary students in the Youth Bureau. It's running at SYS and the Kids Club Program on Monday afternoons. The program teaches young students how to listen and retell a story in their own words. This builds listening skills, creativity, and verbal expression, and that's something I wish every student would take care of. And on another note, San Gennaro is clearly canceled this weekend. It's rescheduled for October twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. If for whatever reason that doesn't happen, it is canceled for twenty-twenty-three.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
So more bad weather, huh?
More bad weather. We've had five weekends in a row.
Yeah.
Mine's very brief.
Have, have you been down to the inlet? Are they pumping sand yet?
They were setting up. I haven't seen it.
Still setting up, hmm. Yeah, because it was supposed to be so rough seas this weekend. Yeah.
Mine's just very brief. I just want to thank Tom Hohn and Peter Goriello, the, uh, cupola, which was purple for National Recovery Month last month, is pink this month for national, for breast cancer awareness.
Okay, all right, so.
And it is off by ten o'clock.
It complies with all the dogs that are lightening. All right, so, all right, so for executive session, we have, um, CPF, you know, acquisitions, property acquisitions, as well as, um, confidential legal. And, uh, so, are we doing personnel?
No.
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 Reducation.
Wait, so I will make a motion to end our work session and go into executive session, um, on those items.
Second.
All right, seconded by Council Menvivier, all in favor? We are adjourned.